And Congress Johnson City Council Meeting Number Twenty-Five-Eighteen to Order. Sam Roque, please.
Coop.
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
First item that we have on the agenda is to welcome the audience. We want to welcome everyone that is here this evening. We have one item that is on the agenda. Now, if you'd like that item to come up and address the council at that time, prepare for an item that is not on the agenda. There will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. Next item on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. Council Coop, you have the right to vote.
I have.
First up, here.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America.
To the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Next item on the agenda is the agenda of the board. We have motion to move the agenda. Sam Roque, please. The motion is started, discussion. Sam Roque, please.
Ready?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to, or the next item on the agenda, oh, the next. Moving on to public communications, I'm losing my place. We have three proclamation, or four proclamations. I think I missed a couple of them. The first proclamation that we have is a proclamation proclaiming September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Just as kind of an introduction to this, I just want to share that National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is an annual national health campaign organized by major childhood cancer organizations to increase the awareness of pediatric cancer and to raise funds for research into its cause, prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and cure. We do have Children's Cancer Connection here in Johnston, and they have asked that we read this proclamation to make all our residents aware about cancer effects our youth every day. And I just want to share that last year, we had very similar proclamation that we read. And at that time, we had with us the Driscoll family, Mike, Christie, Mitch, Logan, and Cooper. And at that reading of the proclamation, we recognized Cooper, who was then ten years old. He was diagnosed with childhood cancer at three years old. And just kind of hauntingly coincidental, we were made aware late last week that Cooper had passed away. And we want to extend our sympathies to his family. You know, we, you know, Cooper was a very courageous young man, and we enjoyed getting to know him then. And I know that other council members have spent even more time with the Driscoll family and with Cooper because of their connections with their children in school. But we were very sad to receive that information and to extend our heartfelt sympathies to the Driscoll family. With that, I think that we have. I'm sorry, I'm forgetting your name.
Jennifer.
Jennifer. Jennifer from the Children's Cancer Center with us this evening. So if you want to join me up front. Well, look at the grand family. Mother of all. Why don't I read the proclamation? Family and we talked a bit more about what we recognize this month as as childhood cancer. I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children. And whereas one in two hundred and eighty-five children in the United States will be diagnosed by their twentieth birthday. And whereas forty-seven children per day of seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-five children per year are diagnosed with cancer in the United States. And whereas the average age of diagnosis is six years old compared to sixty-six years old for adults with cancer. Whereas two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment toxicity, with one quarter being classified as severe to life-threatening. And whereas in the last twenty years, only four new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer. And whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry it south. And whereas hundreds of nonpublic organizations at the local and national level, including Children's Cancer Connection, Family Cancer Network, and Unravel Iowa, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. And whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Now therefore, I call in here and fill Mayor Johnson to hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-three as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Johnston. I encourage community members to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in support of this cause that so deeply impacts families here and throughout our country. And I excitedly did it today. So I want to present this to you, Jennifer. And I take this with you. We'll probably take a picture. You present it. Wait, there's a second round now.
They're not all here.
Okay. Softball, there's a lot of softball. That's okay.
So this one right now, what's your name? Erin. How are you? There goes school. What about your scissors?
Ash, eighteenth grade.
And what about your horses?
Amy is in seventh grade. She's the, she's the oldest now. And Bria used to be the oldest. I'm pretty sure that she would be. She'd be eight. I don't know what school she went to.
She would have went to Johnston. Anything else you want to say? A lot to ask. Yeah, I mean, I think, right? We went through really a long period of cancer and pediatric cancer awareness and going through all the different events and things that we. It's just a long path from Bria's young age to when she passed away. She went through a lot of different stuff because we could spend all of our time when she born. So we're trying to catch back up to time we missed and trying to fill in all those gaps that you missed and you go through all these trials. So it's, it's a short term, it's a nightmare. But things look good, things are getting better, and it's just you get older, you know? So sports take up a lot of time.
Um, my friend's coming up.
It's horrible. What are you, what are you gonna get? What do you want?
I'm gonna find a new robot.
Yeah, but we want to thank everybody. And this is a big deal. This is a real big deal for a lot of families that struggle with this. Thank you.
Well, Children's Cancer Connection is located here in Johnston on Green Hill Road. But we serve the whole state of Iowa. This year, we've served over seven hundred and eighty families throughout the state. There are about a hundred and fifty new pediatric cancer diagnoses in Iowa each year. We, we connect and care for these families, and we are truly unique in that we care for the entire family for the entire journey. We offer over sixty different unique programming opportunities to the families so that they can connect and support each other as they go through this really tough time. So the grand family, Bria passed away, and yet they can still come and participate in all of our programs. We have sibling camp. We have day camp. I know you guys came to day camp. We've come to.
That was her first time, actually.
Yeah.
Because they told me.
Yeah. So we have family outings, football family pumpkin festival. We have a scholarship program. We have a team program. We have a monthly kids' art club. Just all sorts of programs for the kids to come and feel cared for and supported and be around the other people who are going through the, that same thing. So siblings get to talk to other siblings. Oncology kids get to talk to other oncology kids. And parents get to talk to other parents. So there are twelve families in Johnston who are in our programs of the seven hundred and eighty families we serve. So, thank you. Well, thank you, Jennifer, for being here this evening. And thank you for advocating the Children's Cancer Connection here in Johnston. You do an amazing, you do amazing work over there. I had the opportunity to tour the facility after, just right after your renovation over there. And it's just an incredible facility. And you know, you could tell from the turnout of the crowd that was there that that day is so appreciated and so, you know, so, so well-used by, you know, people all over the state and supported by people all over the state. So, so thank you for being here in Johnston. And thank you to the grand family for being here with us and sharing their story. Wish all the best. Sounds like the rest of the family is, is, is doing well and growing and in, in trying to play sports and in school. So again, good luck to all of you and keep competing tonight. You did a nice job. So, thank you, thank you very much. Good step out. Just a minute to give. I can see what's happening. So the next proclamation that we have this evening is to proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I know the chief's willing to join me up here. Is there any need that departments are involved in recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month? And I'll just read a brief description here of what the proclamation needs. Breast Cancer Awareness Month is recognized each year in October by the Johnson and Johnson Fire Department and the Johnson Police Department. As important as it serves as an annual reminder for women and men to try and prioritize the breast health through early detection and screening. This Awareness Month also plays a vital role in de-stigmatizing conversations surrounding breast cancer and encouraging open dialogue and fostering support for those affected by the disease. So I don't know, chief, you want to talk about what your, what your departments do? So I might as well do that.
So each year in October, our firefighters, fire to October, design new t-shirt. Some years they're pink, some years they're maybe blue with a pink ribbon and wearing on there. But they do that to signify breast cancer awareness and keep it aware, keep everyone aware of it. And then we authorize them to wear them the whole month of October.
Now, are the t-shirts available and can you purchase as well?
Uh, yes, we already had one order. I think if the public's interested, they can just stay over me and we'll already get another one together. And show solidarity for breast cancer survivors. Everyone who bought children, please offer, give the option to wear our traditional patch but it's in pink color so as the officers that are totally out of control of all their beautiful beauties showing that support. We've got breast cancer survivors that are on the local and police department as far as kind of family members. And it's something that's close to home most families. So our, our role in this is to really just provide that support aspect and also understand the conjunction with the fire department. Anyone would like, if they want to pick patches, certainly likes that. We've sold those as well.
Well, I will read the proclamation and then we'll take a quick question. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas October is a nationally recognized month for breast cancer awareness. And whereas the city of Johnston, Iowa is committed to raising, helping raise awareness for breast cancer and support research to find a cure. And whereas one in eight women will get breast cancer in their lifetime. And whereas this year, an estimated two thousand, two hundred thousand nine, two hundred thousand nine. Two hundred and ninety thousand abruptly. Women in the United States will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer. And whereas it is estimated that over forty-three thousand seven hundred women will die from breast cancer this year. And whereas an estimated two thousand eight hundred men will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year. And whereas an estimated five hundred thirty men will die from breast cancer. Whereas wearing pink is becoming an increasingly strong tradition during the month of October for firefighters and police officers across the nation. And whereas Johnson Brown's firefighters will be wearing t-shirts and sweatshirts in a pink ribbon, and Johnson Police Officers will be wearing pink patches in October to raise awareness for breast cancer. And whereas the proceeds from the t-shirts, sweatshirts, and pink patches will support local cancer patients. I therefore call in here and fill Mayor of Johnston to hereby proclaim October Breast Cancer Awareness Month throughout the city, and I authorize the Fire Department members to wear t-shirts and sweatshirts with pink ribbons and the police officers to wear pink patches as a reminder to all people of Johnston to live a healthy lifestyle and get regular checkups. And again, I excitedly did it today, so. I think there's, you know, some really good information in this proclamation that most people aren't even aware of. I mean, to the extent, the first time I read this proclamation several years ago, I was surprised by the number of men that are affected by breast cancer. So it's important that all of us take this disease serious and get regular checkups. Typically, I don't have so many proclamations, so that's why I'm very least organized. The next proclamation is a proclamation proclaiming September seventeen through twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, as Constitution Week. Constitution Week is the commemoration of America's most important document that is celebrated annually during the week of September seventeen through twenty-three. The aims of Constitution Week's celebration are to, one, emphasize residents' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution. Two, inform residents that the Constitution is the basis for America's great, great heritage and the foundation for our way of life. And third, encourage the study of the historical events which led to the framing of the Constitution in September seventeen eighty-seven. I think we have a couple of guests here this evening. You want to come up? I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and you can talk more about why you, why you're here. Why do you think this is such an important, important task? Constitution Week, September seventeen through twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas September seventeen, two thousand twenty-three marks the two hundred and thirty-sixth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to court official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration that will commence, that will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeen through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. And now therefore, I call in here and fill Mayor of Johnston to hereby proclaim the week of September seventeen through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. In the city of Johnston, and I encourage community members to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution, the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by visually protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guarding of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. If witness were up, I here, here and to set my hand and seal at the city of Johnston to be affixed as eighth of May of September twenty twenty-two. And I excitedly saw it as well.
Maybe we might be able to get a picture for this one?
Sorry?
Would you mind if we took a?
Please. Everybody introduce yourselves and announce how against why you're here seeking for this proclamation.
My name is Carter Wright, and I'm here with the Catholic hymn and we are with the Daughters of the American Revolution. And so Constitution, Constitution Week is a patriot friend for us. And our three major tenets are education, patriotism, and historic preservation. So we're Constitution Week, we follow both these. And so we're happy to be here very much for the United States. And we have a little gift for you. Look at that. Fresh coffee. Happy size, happy of the U.S. Constitution. And if anyone needs one, we know where we're going. Okay, we're here.
Well, thank, thank you again for being here this evening. You know, Constitution is a very, very important document. And, you know, if it wasn't for it, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't enjoy all the rights that we have as U.S. citizens. So thank you for bringing this to our attention and for being here this evening. With that, I'll, I'll give you that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. You bet. We have one more proclamation this evening, and that is a proclamation proclaiming September eighteenth through the twenty-fourth as twenty twenty-three Hope County Injury Prevention Month. Hope County is recognizing September eighteen through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, as Hope County Injury Prevention Week. And it's the, the Prevention Week issued here identifying as gun safety saves lives. During the campaign, the city of Johnston will participate in the Talk It Up, Lock It Up campaign. As part of this campaign, we will be promoting free gun locks that would be available by either picking them up at the Hope County Health Department, the Johnson Public Library, and the Johnson Police Department. And I think we have representatives from Hope County. Reading this proclamation as well. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and then we'll, we'll let our guests share a little more information. Twenty twenty-three Hope County Injury Prevention Week, Gun Safety Saves Lives. Whereas cities across Hope County are recognizing the twenty twenty-three Hope County Injury Prevention Week, Gun Safety Saves Lives during September eighteen through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, and the city of Johnston is participating in the Hope County Health Department Talk It Up, Lock It Up campaign. And whereas gun injuries are now one of the leading causes of death for children and young adults in Hope County. And whereas one in three homes has a gun in the house. And whereas forty-five percent of gun-related deaths occurred at home in Hope County, and sixty-six percent of suicides in Hope County were attributed to gun injuries. And whereas our youth are suffering from anxiety and depression more than ever before, putting them at a higher risk for suicide. And whereas we know talking to our friends and family members about storing guns locked and unloaded at home and in vehicles helps prevent gun-related injuries and deaths. And whereas free gun locks are available for pickup at the Hope County Health Department, Johnson Public Library, and Johnson Police Department among other locations in the county. Now therefore, I call in here and fill Mayor of the city of Johnston on behalf of the Johnson City Council and Johnson Police Department to hereby designate September eighteen through the twenty-fourth as twenty twenty-three Hope County Injury Prevention Week, Gun Safety Saves Lives, and encourage all Johnston residents to talk about the importance of safe gun storage. I'm excited I dated this one today as well. Thank you. Helen Eddie with the Hope County Health Department. As you heard, guns are one of the leading causes of death for our youth and young adults in Hope County. And we believe that safe storage can save lives. What does safe gun storage means? It means storing your weapon locked and unloaded, ideally with the ammunition separately. We often talk and hear about gun violence, but what we don't hear about are the unintentional injuries and also the suicides among them. And we're just encouraging all gun owners to have those conversations. We talk about a lot of things regarding child safety. We talk about swimming pool covers, outlet covers in your locks, how to put the poisons away. But we're not having conversations about gun safety. So we encourage everyone, particularly if you have children in the home or children that visit you frequently, to store them safely. Talk it up and lock it up. Thank you. Thanks for coming this evening with us and bringing this issue forward to us. It, it absolutely is a critically important issue, you know, without some effort by those of us in the public sector, you know, highlighting it. Or where that it's a critical issue of one that, you know, it's predictable. You know, the injuries that are caused from venues aren't preventable. And so it's important to make sure that people are taking the actions that they need to or minimizing the injury and death. Thanks again for being here.
Eric, could we join you for a picture?
Yes. So we just completed all of the items or lists in our public communications. Is there anyone in the audience who might request that comes on an item that is not listed? Like to speak in terms of public communications. Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearing. We got four public hearings this evening. First public hearing is to conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number twenty-three, twenty-two hundred and thirty-two, approving and authorizing execution of development agreement by the City of Johnson and Andrew C. Christensen, the Hope World Living Trust dated April fifth, twenty-eleven. We'll open this public hearing at seven forty-one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a closed development agreement between the city and Andrew Christian World World Trust. This is concerning property located on Rollia Road, just north of Lithia South Pagliax Pizza. Now, the developer has, as part of this development agreement, is committed to complete two projects, one a commercial business center and a hotel. And the second hotel is part of this development. The minimum improvements for the commercial business center includes an approximate eleven thousand per foot facility with six tenants, a base for a total investment of about two point five million dollars. And this would be consistent with the site plan and previously approved by the city. As for the hotel, the minimum improvements for the hotel's total investment, ten million dollars, construction cost consisting of a hundred hotel rooms with facilities that are existent within mid-level hotel in the market, including a pool, meeting room, and rec service. Now, the commercial business center is a required element of the project should the developer not opt to construct the construction, it will still be eligible to receive the incentive for the commercial business center. However, the incentive for the hotel would not be provided to the developer. The specifics of the development incentive would be a two hundred thousand dollar for the, excuse me, for the business center would be two hundred thousand dollar upfront pre-development plan that is provided within thirty days of approval of the development agreement. And then starting on June first, twenty twenty-seven, the city will provide a seventy-five percent tax benefit financing incentive minus twenty thousand dollars each disinterred for ten years for a total of two six hundred thousand dollars. If the developer would construct the hotel, the city would provide an additional pre-development amount of twenty, turn fifty thousand dollars within thirty days of completing the, receiving the final site plan of the pool as described in this agreement. Additionally, we have to have the permitting and probation completed by July first, twenty twenty-seven. And then with that, they would receive an incentive of seventy-five percent of the tax benefit financing for ten years, minus twenty five thousand dollars a year for up to two point five million. The Economic Development Committee have reviewed this request on several occasions and have recommended the pool. And as of tonight, we have not seen any written public comments or, yeah, whatever you're saying, written comments. With that, we have the answering questions and compliments.
Any questions, Mike?
So Mike, when you said in your comments that it's consistent with the site plan, I just want to make the site plan didn't make reference to the development, to a tip agreement that is what is, the development requirements were consistent with what they have in sight.
So the, yeah, so the development agreement, and that's on, basically the strip center that's being constructed, that's a requirement in the development that it is, it remains consistent with that site plan approved by the council. Obviously, the hotel would still come out of it.
Right, because that site plan has been approved.
Council, other questions for Mike? This is a public hearing on the side of, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council. Seeing none, we've closed the public hearing now at seven forty-five. We have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash two thirty-two. We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam, please.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item four B, conduct a public hearing on the matter of adoption plans, specifications, formal contract, estimate of cost for the twenty twenty-three Beaver Creek stabilization project. Consider resolution number twenty-three dash two thirty-four, adopting plans, specifications, formal contract, and estimate of cost. Consider construction bids, consider resolution number twenty-three dash two thirty-five, making award contract to RWX Escavating of Prairie City Isle. We'll open this public hearing at seven forty-six.
Good evening. This project is a combined project, including stormwater improvements as well as ground improvements. Given they were in close proximity, they were bid as a single package with two divisions. So the funding for each division can be handled separately. Now, this is located along Beaver Creek, generally behind Lithia and the Night Sports Complex. Will include about three thousand feet of longitudinal peaks, going over potential on Beaver Creek push. Is that another place on Beaver Creek to prevent the creek from continuing to erode into the property? In the trail portion, we included reconstruction of the trail and a partial re-alignment of the trail, generally from the park area south of the night down and under the Rollia Road Bridge, which accounts with bombers improvements on the east side of Rollia Road. So the data reconstruction of a split portion of that, of that trail. Engineers' opinion, probable cost of the total project was seven hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. But we did have seven bidders who presented bids. The stormwater fund portion of this project, as well as the next two projects that are on your agenda tonight, are being funded through SRF, an SRF loan. And so we are required to follow high finance, according to our bidding requirements, which includes the bidder providing a number of forms with their bid, and curve that they're providing following the SRF process. Only three of the seven bidders follow that process. And so four of the bidders were, need this time responsive. As a result, RWX Escavating of Prairie City was a low bid with a bid price, total bid price of four hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. About two hundred and eighty-two thousand of that was for the stormwater portion, and two hundred and four thousand for the trail portion. That bid was thirty-four point seven percent below the engineer's estimate. So a very, very competitive bid there. RWX Escavating has done a number of stormwater projects for us for the past few years, and have been bid with a job on this project. So with that, I will stop there and have questions.
Council, any questions?
I do, Mayor. David, can you tell me the trail that is being removed and replaced under Rollia Road? The elevation, the finished elevation of that trail then being higher than it is currently? That is probably one of the areas that floods the most for us. Were we allowed to make it higher?
Being that that area is a floodway, we need to keep the elevation similar to where it is. We can do some work down there to ensure that the water that's coming off will drain under the trail better, so we'll have so much mud coming down from the hillside. So that will be a component of it. But the level of that trail had to be consistent with where it's at. We wouldn't have been able to elevate it very far anyways because of clearance issues with under the bridge. So there wasn't a chance to elevate it too much.
Right, I understand. And hopefully the details for that section of the trail, which will get, you know, covered with water, maybe more reinforcement or, you know, so it doesn't wash out.
Yeah, and that will actually, that piece, portion of the trail will come in a little bit later. It's not really a part of this project due to the fact that the water main that can run through there intersects through that same area. So there's a portion of the trail that we're going to have to leave, leave for a period of time until that water main is available.
Thank you. Council, have any other questions? If not, this is a public hearing on the side of, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council. Seeing none, we've closed the public hearing now at seven fifty-one. We have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash two thirty-four.
Sold.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam, please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. We have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash two thirty-five. Second. We have a motion and second discussion. Sam, please.
Coe.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item four C, conduct a public hearing on the matter of adopting plans, specifications, formal contract, and estimate of cost for the Forest Channel Stabilization Project and consider resolution number twenty-three dash two forty-four, adopting plans, specifications, formal contract, and estimate of cost. Consider construction bids, consider resolution number twenty-three dash two forty-five, making award contract to RWX Escavating of Prairie City Isle. We'll open this public hearing at seven fifty-two.
Good evening. This project is within the forest subdivision of off the Northwest Beaver Drive, specifically between fifty-four thirty-one and fifty-four forty-one Forest Drive. Kind of at the end of the bullets out of that Forest Drive, there is a storm sewer outlet that is, outlook's very high in the channel. As a result, we've got a slump of that down heading that's happening between these properties. So this project would put in a drop structure, a short extension of storm sewer, and then do some downstream channel stabilization practices, similar to other stormwater projects that we've done a lot. And our most bigger four work. This project had a engineer's opinion of probable cost of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. We did have six bidders on this project, again, due to the same issue I described in the previous item, only four of those were deemed to be responsive. With a low bid, the RWX Escavating of Prairie City with a bid of one hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars will change four point five percent below the engineer's estimate. So it would be a very competitive bid. With that, I'll pause, and we have any questions?
Here I have one. David, at the very top of this agenda item, it has a dollar amount at four hundred and eighty-six thousand.
That is a carryover. So we actually don't have, we had, but.
Just want to be sure you're right.
Too many projects on the same table.
Thank you.
I just want to know when RWX Escavating is going to open our office and.
You have other questions for David? This is a public hearing on this item, consider anyone who may want to collect from this council. Seeing none, we've closed the public hearing at seven fifty-four. We have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash two forty-four. We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam, please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. We have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash two forty-five. Second. A motion and second discussion. Sam, please.
Coe.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item forty-eight, conduct a public hearing on the matter of adopting plans, specifications, formal contract, and estimate of cost for the Green Meadows Huntington Wood Court Channel Stabilization Project. And consider resolution number twenty-three dash two forty-six, adopting plans, specifications, formal contract, and estimate of cost. Consider construction bids, consider resolution number twenty-three dash two forty-seven, seven, making award contract to RWX Escavating of Prairie City Isle. Open this public hearing at seven fifty-five.
Good evening. This project is in the Green Meadows West neighborhood between Foxborough Road and Huntington Court. There's an existing drainage way that drains from the west side of Foxborough East and to Beaver Creek. A particular concern in this drainage way, we have a sanitary sewer that crosses this channel, and we have a sanitary sewer manhole for the eastern end of it, which is partially exposed and concerned about obviously erosion taking out that sanitary sewer manhole. And so this project would use channel stabilization through that, through that corridor and include stabilization adjacent to that sanitary sewer manhole. This project had a, estimated engineer's opinion, probable cost of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents. We did have five bidders on the project, and again, had an issue against the red documentation, three of those five being considered responsive bidders. The low, parent low bid was RWX Escavating of Prairie City at four hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, twenty cents, or four point seven six percent below the engineer's estimate. With that, I'll pause, and we have any questions on this project?
Council, any questions?
Here I have one. David, this seems to be a recurring trend with these three SRF projects that we're discussing tonight. I just want to know, is, is there anything in the future that we need to be doing or should do when we set out to request bids so that no of this compliance?
Yeah.
Or is this typical, I guess?
This is, I wouldn't say this is typical. I did talk to one of the bidders a couple of different times since the bids. He's relatively new to bidding on municipal work and just not familiar with the process. And so he said, I saw the forms in there, I just submit, sign, and apply. Well, that's the problem, because you have little information on those that, you know, they have to consider for bid. So he was fine, he understood it, and just, like I said, was new to it. I think one of the other contractors, I didn't talk about them specifically, but I could typically work with them as a subcontractor, not necessarily a prime contractor. So I'm not sure, again, if they, maybe you're not familiar with the process, but certainly we'll look at our bid package on those and going forward and make sure it's, I mean, it seems pretty clear that they're required to be smooth with the bid, they're on the forms directly sent through bid, but we'll try to draw a lot of interest.
Thanks.
Any questions for David?
So David, this is the project, I think that you talked to us about a couple times meetings ago, where kind of as the project gets closer to remarried, you took some design elements and even, I think, you might have mentioned even the initial design that the engineers came up with, would have resulted in more tree removal. But the city staff really provided direction and kind of worked with to have that plan redesigned. So that was a special improvement.
So that's right. On the eastern end of this, there are actually the properties get deeper, so the houses are much further away from the channel. There's a lot of established landscaping out there, in particular, a lot of oaks on the eastern end. You know, the traditional, oh, we need to slow banks back at this percent, make sure they're stable. I would really take out almost all of those trees. And so we did direct the engineer looking at other alternatives. We had a couple of public meetings, I just kept refining and losing that footprint to make sure that we're implementing the amount of trees that necessary. I will tell you that would work, that would actually plug it in a higher bid price because much of the block walls are more expensive and greying and hard to sleep. But we're still, I'm talking about, you know, it's still relatively affordable, so I'm on a private group. Certainly worth the investment in that nature.
Right, and I think that's, you know, obviously, we have a lot of residents who are very interested in ensuring that looking at everything we can to protect trees. I think that's important, and I think that's certainly, I think we also need to do, take opportunities in which where we're taking some steps that maybe people aren't even aware of, because it's not a high-profile project, to educate or communicate some of the ways that we're trying to go about protecting, especially in this whole area, you know, that if you go further up that trail, or not the trail, but that stormwater project, that there's some very nice, beautiful oaks right there along Foxborough Road and saved and maintained because of stormwater. So just, first of all, great work by them, trying to provide some direction to, to minimize some impact on some very significant trees. Something the staff should be, to encourage us to give them some opportunity to kind of socialize that now. Because we know the folks are interested in these issues and they're going to have some success.
Unfortunately, we didn't say them all, it would take, so we didn't know.
Other questions or comments?
I have one comment. David, I see that there's some shrubs being suggested in the relandscaping plan. I'm hoping that you will consult with Carrie and John on the plant species, you know, something that will survive in that condition, that it's going to be going into, hopefully, shade from the trees you've. shade from the trees you've saved. And then now, the other thing I would say is, if you're putting in the wattles or the strong logs, we've been having a lot of success up at our estate with leaving those elements in there as a erosion control, because they break down over time and disappear. But while they're there, to help control erosion down those woods.
I believe I have the intent on those, and the shrubs, we are limited, because the SRF is no limit to Iowa needed.
That's fine, that's fine.
I don't recall the specific ones we used here, but we'll traditionally, it's all the parts around here, it's a shrub that will help the machine by.
Well, it was black and cold, it was. No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, does that mean I'm dead?
Only our office.
Any other questions for David? Not, this is a public hearing on this item, considering one in the audience would like to discuss this. Seeing none, we close the public hearing at 8:02. We have a motion to approve resolution number 23-246. So. Second. We have a motion and second discussion. Sam Bo, please.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 23-247? Remove.
Second.
We have a motion in the second discussion. Sam Bo, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Motion passed. Moving on to consent agenda, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Remove.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Sam Bo, please.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to non-consent agenda, 7A, consider third considerations, adoption and publishing ordinance number 1103, amending ordinance, ordinance numbers 487, 733, 798, 847, 953, and 997, providing that general property taxes levied at each year on certain property located within the amended Beaver Creek West Economic Development Urban Renewal Area in the city of Johnson County Folk, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Johnson County Folk, Johnson Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund payment of principal interest on loans, money, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued, incurred by the city in connection with the amended Beaver Creek West Economic Development Urban Renewal Area.
Yeah, no changes from previous hearing, no public comments, unfortunately, it's the last time you know, it's been a very long. Yeah, any questions?
Else have any questions? Seeing none, is there anyone in the, in the audience that would like to discuss something on this topic? Then we have a motion to approve third consideration adoption and publishing ordinance number 1103.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam Bo, please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider third consideration, adoption and publishing of ordinance number 1104, providing that general property taxes levied at each year on certain property located within the northwest 86th street urban renewal area in the city of Johnson County Folk, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Johnson County Folk, Johnson Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund payment of principal interest on loans, monies advanced to, and indebtedness, including bonds issued to and or to be issued, incurred by the city in connection with the northwest 86th street urban renewal area. David.
Again, no changes from previous hearing, I know this is all.
Else have any questions for David? If anyone in the audience wants to address something else on the side. Seeing none, we have a motion to approve third consideration, adoption and publishing ordinance number 1104.
Oh. Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Sam Bo, please.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C, considering moving from table and to consider approval of first reading of order number 1095, amending the official zoning map for 18.26 acres from PUD to C1 and C2. Subject property is located around intersection northwest of Avenue and Merle Hay Road and Merle Hay Road. These are 2306.
If we first actually move the table?
We have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number nine, uh, ordinance number 1095 from the table. Remove.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Sam.
Mayor, I actually would like to comment, it was late, I was made known of some communications that pertained, or some potential development that pertained to this, that came in late this afternoon, I don't feel comfortable removing this from the table to discuss until I have a chance to look at it further.
We do have a motion and a second, is this discussion, does anybody else want?
I think you've done procedureally, this is just removing the item from the table so that it can be taken up and considered.
Okay. And I, I guess, related to Councilman Burkhardt's concern, as I run through the information that was sent to us, it all relates to site plan issues. So, which are not really part of either to present and, frankly, I think it's important that we if we, they're really two separate issues, and then broader issues, is this a use that should be allowed at this site, naturally, what this idea was discussed, right? And if, 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 with the resoning allows us to use, then get into the details of site plan, and there's lots of trade-offs. And you have the, the, the distance from the Menon Wood property, you also have existing trees on the site, and, and those are not part of the, the, the issue. So to me, asking where your concern to legitimate, but I don't, I don't know that anything that we received in the last quarter or hour relates to use questions, right?
Any other discussion? We have a motion to remove this item from the table. As a discussion, Sam Bo, please.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
No.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Since it's been a little while since we've last seen this, I figured I'd go through a brief synopsis of the proposals we've identified for this. This is a zoning of a PUP that's generally centered around the West 55th Avenue and Merle Hay Road, currently is a PUP being developed with references back to our C1, C2, and C3 zoning district, with certain prohibited uses thereat. Really, this came about primarily as a result of a proposed car wash development on the southeast corner of West 55th Avenue and Merle Hay Road, however, and this is also a PUP that has been identified by staff as being a candidate for considering using it back for the base zoning district, since it really wasn't much of a PUP with a number of forbidden PUPs. So that's why staff recommended that we bring this board as a package to look at the whole PUP at this time. So yes, there is a proposed user on the site, but we are talking about the larger area as a whole as well. And certainly property will be divided on the, on the specific site as well, we can certainly do. Just kind of a brief synopsis, properties were originally zoned, so a combination of residential and ag all the back in 1971, with our initial zoning map. However, pretty shortly thereafter, 1974, it was owned for commercial uses and had remained commercial since. There was that 49 years now, it's a commercial. We do show on our drive, 24th Concretive Plan, as a commercial land use throughout the entirety of the PUP, and it is also located within the Merle Hay Road Gate with Master Plan, at least in part, where we do identify it, we develop this commercial zone. The particular uses that are currently prohibited on this site include self-contained restaurants with drive-by windows that typically exhibit high-traffic generation rates, convenience stores with fuel sales, vehicle washing, and automobile repair. That's a particular one that triggered the need for the resoning with the car wash, because it includes vehicle washing, off adult entertainment businesses, lumberyard, mini warehouses, truck stops, and mutant parks, and other uses that are consistent by type used to be physical characteristics, size, and purpose of the use of this. The result, the resoning to a base C2 zoning district would both relax some of those uses as well as result in a few uses becoming prohibited that currently could be allowed. Those that would be relaxed then would be allowed by right would be self-contained restaurants with drive-by windows that typically exhibit high-traffic generation rate, convenience stores with fuel sales, except that no vehicle repair needed conducted on the site, car washes limited to only one automated ton or one automated in day. Uses that would become prohibited include school post-secondary, that's essentially a college, and automobile sales, and Commercial Central Regional, which is a shopping center with 100,000 square feet of crater. So certainly the C2 district is in compliance with the drive zone for the Concretive Plan, as well as Merle Hay Road Gate with Master Plan. adjoining uses on the site, looking at the entire PUP, to the east, the property is on Harwood 75, a single family. To the south, there's properties of C3, as well as a PUP from the night sports complex. To the west, is property zone PUP, multi-family residential PUP. Unfortunately, that is a PUP that is extremely unclear, unallowed uses, best to be told, strip townhouses, because that's zone, but we have no records of it, in fact, unfortunately. Within the PUP, we have a combination of child care, two shopping centers, commercial shopping centers, as well as vacant land and one existing residential property, this ward's property, that is currently a legal non-performing use, and has been since 1974. We did provide notice to all adjoining properties, and I did re-notice for tonight's meeting, and we did republish the newspaper as well. As of this meeting, there were three public presentations, I did update those online tonight. Two of those, one of them was from Ron Ward, and one was from the proposed developer of the car wash. And then the third that I'm highlighting, called it to do, was from Ketticola's in order, the northern shopping center on the west side of Merle Hay Road. He specifically requested that it's like just being with a PUP, and not with a C2. So that was the first time we heard that one. So that's a very quick synopsis, I'm happy to go into further detail, answer questions. I know we have representatives of the car wash development audience, I can believe I saw some people online, but they kept suggesting, well, they want to check as well. But that'll stop. I guess for one last, we've got, but any additional admission has reviewed this and has.
Let's start with constant questions to Clayton. Is there any questions for Clayton?
Can you bring up that, that, that part with the password?
Which is that you want, I got several here.
I think, I opened one, I really tried to do it. That's clear?
Yeah.
The word is a red one.
The red area, red back area would be zoned to C2, community commercial zoning district, and the yellow would be zoned to C1. We have a commercial district, and the reason for the C1 is nursing care facility, which child care department falls into, is not allowed in C2, but it's allowed in C1, and we remain to have their child care facilities in C1 as well. So that was a pretty, there's only.
That's too beautiful. East of. That one, yes.
There's actually one, two, three, four, five, six, seven properties. But there's one ownership here of these three, one ownership here, that's this one board, and then these two are owned by the LL company, and that piece there is part of Life Surf Blood Center.
Second side, if we're on the watch, and first one, it's the car wash, right?
If these northern three, and the right here, that one over, that would be the proposed car wash. And this ward is this one here, the existing single-family residence.
Can you explain to me, the buffering that's proposed within the water watch and the car wash? What is the buffering that's wrapped in? And taking course, like, the noise that comes, and then, then steady down, the noise from the car wash, what's the noise on the road? How different, how much difference it makes, if that's a safe one or more?
So regarding buffering, the zoning district, C2 to C2, which this will be, as well as current zoning, PUP to PUP of the same PUP, there is no buffer required between redevelopment of that corner and this ward's property. The site and concept you have in front of you this evening, our concept that I've not been bringing before, we will have shown various options for buffering, but as currently proposed, there would be no legal mechanism to require the buffer. I'm going to toss out, you know, there is always the opportunity, if agreeable by the property owner, to do a resoning with conditions which would establish the legal right of requirement for a buffer. That is currently not part of it, but that's certainly something that if agreeable with the property owner, could be maybe as like an amendment to the, to the zoning change, but no, there is not a buffer required, they have indicated that they're willing to, though. Regarding the question about noise, no data has been submitted, and there's no data that would be required to be submitted. So I would maybe defer over to the developers of the car wash, if they have specific information really doing noise, but I do not have specific data on that.
I think it would be a good idea to know what's noise, and how this was brought, was that, I don't know, it's a residential house that, it's house that also leads up there, and she, and a lot of that, so they will be, so now it's coming from that forest, the car wash, and what's on the road, yeah. And regarding buffering, because of that, let's say in reasoning that there's a resident up here, we probably need to consider what's.
So hopefully, if you know, then you can address that, and then go off to address the council. That is further than the specifics of what's.
So Clayton, if, I know you pointed out that the war property currently is, it's currently in the PUD, it would be C2. If it was zoned residential, what would be the required buffer between that property and of this property?
It would tend to be, it'd be a 50-foot buffer between, yeah, if it's, if you have, we require 50-foot buffer between our Harwood 1 district and C2 district. If they're both undeveloped, it's split equally amongst the two, if one is developed and one is not, since it's the case here, the buffer is placed entirely upon the undeveloped parcel. You know, we, if, when we get their site, I need to see that there is a full 50-foot buffer placed on the east side of the proposed car wash site, put on there at the reset, that's because there is a zoning district. The thing is, they are on the east, but not on the south.
And then you also have in your there's a it's called car wash permitted zones along Merle Hay Road. So this is a map of, I understand that are areas along Merle Hay Road that under zoning to. That under zoning today. A car wash could be. Just go right to site point, but there's no resoning required, is that correct?
That is correct, and this map was limited to just our Merle Hay Road care corridor. It does not take into consideration either dry or other color. But you are correct. Property available just those three to site plan, for the, allow by right within those districts. Areas that are not allowed along the corridor will be our mixed-use center centered around Merle Hay Road and sixty-second. And then you got the P U V under consideration and then the Johnston Station P U V, which will immediately north of this. Those would be the three areas that are currently not allowed to have car washes. But there's, I guess also the farmer's site.
But obviously there's quite a few other sites either adjacent to or very close to Merle Hay. Today, that where a car wash could be, could be. Just not, I mean, it would be with no result, with no result.
With no resulting required, certainly there's other practice that will go into it, such as. There may be a doubt on that, but yes, those areas.
Are questions for Clayton, Mary, do. Clayton, I, I just wanna revisit that buffer that council member Coke discussed. That measurement, since there are existing developments already on these twelve properties that borders without the buffer. Is it from the, is it from the boundary line or is it from the nearest structure?
It's measured property line to improvement. So in the case of the proposed. Car wash here, I meant what came up earlier today. I pulled this one up here, they're showing the fifty foot buffer between property line and back term. That would need to require a fifty foot buffer.
While you have that graphic up, I wasn't gonna discuss this, this, as council member Coke reminded all of us, that this is not to discuss the site plan. But one of the allowed uses that you discussed was single bay or single lane in, in-beam type car wash. I see two lanes of traffic up there, is, is that in essence not, would that not even be applicable based on the fact that it is not allowed under our current C two wording?
No, because the end tunnel is the actual wash portion itself, only one tunnel that can go through. A multi-bay, they're not autonomous, but they're literally just bulk, bulk of the things connected to the water.
And do we have that defined in our ordinance somewhere?
If so, but I don't recall that one shot down. I'm trying to live it for you if you want it.
I would please. The other question that probably be more germane to tonight, that is, I, I know that we recently had a conversation about rezoning in different areas of the city. And we talked extensively about interest of the landlords there and the request to do so. Out of that eighteen or so acres, how many of the acres covered in this rezoning are, have been requested by landowners?
Does the car wash default? The rest of it, K, from staff recommendation, one option that could give it a few, like, you know. Now we have that additional information from tech public, we could amend it down just the car wash to properly progress it as it is with the.
And what is the big bridge of just that upper corner? In other words, how much is under the control of an owner who's requesting a rezoning?
Do not build out that ahead of it, that's again, I think I can get for you right here in the light of day.
I, I don't think I need that, do you think it's more than fifty percent of that eighteen acres?
It is not more than fifty percent. Really, that's just my.
Clayton, just so that I'm clear, given the, I've had a call to request this evening. To grant that, we would minimally have to change the ordinance to exclude this property from.
That's correct, and if we're gonna exclude them, I would most directly just limit it down to just the car wash, to be progressed as it is. It was brought forward as a staff recommendation and hearing property owners, I was like, this time, please. Let me just pull it back, just the car wash proper and leave the remainder of the piece. While staff doesn't believe it would be proper put into C two. It's not an immediate. There's no, there would not be a harm in being that so, you'd be for the night.
So how would the ordinance need to be changed to do that?
Well, we'd need to change the legal description, I'd have to take a moment to get that for you. I think a motion could be made simply. Probably to say to those parcel owned by. But I may be looking for a senior developer, if I have, how would I amend the ordinance if that corrupts the council law?
I mean, council could make the motion to approve the ordinance. For the property only owned by X, Y, Z property.
That's in the matter.
Yeah, and then for the next reading, we would come back with the corrected legal description.
Because this is a through reading situation.
That is correct. Councilmember Burger, I pulled up the definition of car wash here. Does it talk about the bays? And David, maybe you can look as well and see if you see if, I'm gonna read this one out. Car wash, an area of land and or a structure with machine or hand-operated facilities. Used principally for the cleaning, washing, polishing, or waxing of newer vehicles. If, you know, we have a definition for automated or simple tunnel.
There's not a separate definition, it's just in the use table where those are defined.
It's specifically not worried of in-beam that I was, in, in trying to figure out a definition.
That went back to twenty twenty-one when we opened up C two to car wash. Some of the research right then has terminology of in-beam. And automated, the automated being the tunnel, you know, holds you while you're close to the puddle. The tunnels hold you through, the in-beam is part of the machine around you rather than the car. That's the distinction.
The queuing or the staging has nothing to do with it.
No, it was not that. Like internal, so that's why we didn't.
Because of the language in C two says car wash is kind of limited to only one automated tunnel. Or one automated in-beam, is that right?
That's correct, so they either have the tunnel that's holding the vehicle through, which is proposed on this site. Or one bay or the equipment, you park it in the, the ground of the vehicle.
I have a question, Clayton. And it may be a dumb one, but a zoning change requires three votes.
Correct.
If the first vote is a no, does it still come back for all three?
No, it.
It does, then.
One thing I do wanna point out, if the vote were to fail. A same zoning change requires covering the same area or area plus additional. Could not come back for a period of one year for the initial condition. And this particular case, I'd be approximately, I think, March or April of twenty twenty-four. If not moving by vote, it's been started, it's just started about six months ago. So there is that factor to just have, thing in mind for consideration.
Not so much have that additional consider.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't, isn't negated by your timetable.
Do you with the next one?
Yeah, both procedural items.
I hope.
Yes, give very much into reconsider. At the next meeting, but I've not.
Right, right.
Are there questions for Clayton?
Wait, a quick question. So the developers have had a communication with the zoning. Going up, yeah, he just.
That's how they advise, me at least to the wards to the south, but again, I would defer to the developer who is here in attendance on any communication that they've had, rather than me trying to speak for them.
Yes.
But yeah, I, my understanding is that minimum they talk to the wards to the south.
Well, I like more details than just the top.
And that's why I would defer to them.
Any other questions for Clayton?
I know questions for Clayton, questions for Don Boer over there.
Do the applicants mark them forward and address the site?
Good evening, mayor, council members. UJ Nelson with Midwest Philly Brothers, we queue for the opportunity to address you tonight. MFPs were based in Sioux Falls, I put up, we've developed more than twenty car washes throughout the other Midwest. And still, so are, are like, right. And we're coming into the Duane here right now with about six of those car washes. So, you know, we, you look at Merle Hay as a great area to develop a car wash. It's a very high capacity area, it's close to the interstate. And looking at the comprehensive plan, then we feel like it, it really conforms with that. Clayton had a good quote from. I lost it, right? From the comprehensive plan, just wanna read it. On page eighty, Merle four, Merle eight, four. Active commercial uses are preferred land use pattern from Merle Hay Road. Particularly south and northwest sixty-second street. Experienced space retail and commercial services are desired use patterns of the corridor. Those on residential uses are urban as our store uses and parcel of Merle Hay. And then that mixed-use land pattern for high density along there, so. You know, looking at that, we feel like we've met the criteria of the comprehensive plan. Looking at the market here in Duane, it's, it's great for car washes. Our analysis show we can handle almost thirty more car washes in the entire metro area. When we look at this little area of the metro in Johnston, there's only three common car washes within a half miles. And only one of those is just up the street. And the others are very. Really obsolete, so we're bringing in the Tesla version, those are for those that are not as environmentally friendly. Not as good of a consumer experience and not quite as needed as what you can offer here in Johnston. So, since I find questions have come up, our plan is to have that site plan at the third, we can zone here, so we got along the line where we can talk about some of the buffering. Questions, landscaping, fencing, all those questions, so. Tonight I would ask you to support the, the rezoned application. And with the happy answer to your questions, first, council, you asked about the noise. The war property with the way that we propose this, they would be in that fifty D B A range. Which is really, the D B A can talk to you right now without the microphone. When you're above, you know, seventy, that gets to be curating. If you're above eighty, then it would just says you should have your blood minute if you're working on site. So, you know, we've got a similar property in Sioux Falls. We've got a historic neighborhood fifty feet. You don't get any complaints, we did a sound study that I distributed. From about seventy feet away, the D B As are fifty-four. So one of ours home is a hundred, a hundred forty feet from our town. So we don't expect any noise disruption there. So let, you know, let every ten feet, you lose a little bit of the D B A, so. We're willing to work with the council and the neighbors on how that final site plan works best with C Johnson, we're excited for this investment. I'll stand by every question. How are?
How's any questions? I have a couple there. Thanks for coming in, appreciate it. Can you tell me how many full-time employees you will average?
You know, there are typically two to three onsite at any one given time, our hours of operation. During the summer months, it's eight AM to eight PM, and in the winter, it's eight AM to seven PM. Also, it just depends on, you know, what we expect the business to be for the customer demand. You know, springtime is busy, everyone's getting sold, they're caught off their cars. Weekends are busy, so, you know, it, I don't know about number of full-time, I could ask Brian, who's here, he handles more of the operations side of that, but. No, we usually have two, three onsite at any one time, there's a lot of our.
Okay, and then my other question is, the water that you use, is any of it treated and recirculated or how do you deal with that?
Great question, thank you, Elser. So our car wash, with our system, averages fifty gallons of water. We're then able to treat onsite all of that discharge. And then we reuse anywhere from fifty to seventy-five percent of that water. We collect the sediments and we landfill those, so those are discharged into your service system. And we also don't use any harsh chemicals. So those, you know, your in-beam car washes, they use a lot of harsh chemicals because they don't keep their water. They need the, the full water needs those stronger chemicals to get the correction again. So ours is far more people-friendly than anything, you know, twenty years' worth.
Other questions?
Can you talk a little bit about the information you distributed earlier this afternoon about? What are you receiving, just receiving? Fifty foot buffer. And as I already said, you now believe your design or site plan, if it's a desire, if the city desires to be, yeah, in that way. To need the fifty foot buffer that's been requested by the board, is that correct?
Yes, Elser, thank you, so we look at this a lot because we always try to be, know the best members that we can be. We want, for our community, we want to be part of the community, we want to have the neighbors' confidence, so. We look at how we can accommodate that, and we're able, after speaking with some city staff this morning, they're willing to eat another five feet. The downside is we're gonna have to lose. That's onsite that we want to actually save with our original concept. So really just wanna have all the facts out there, all the measurements, the council to, to get your pulse on what you think is the best man use. Best way that we can afford this property, so. We can, we can accommodate the fifty foot buffers, you know, as, as you saw up there. You have the two pay lanes, so basically you come in queue in two lines and then go through a single tunnel. Our original concept that was in your packet had three pay lanes. That just helps us for, you know, peak, peak capacity. Where we don't have cars overflowing at fifty, that, we certainly don't want those up there, okay, that. But it just gives us more space for queuing, so we lose a few things to accommodate that, so we just wanna make sure that the council will be aware of.
And if, if you, you would be able to save the, the tree, but the buffer, like the war property, forty-five feet, is that correct?
It would be, to save the tree, I think, gosh, I mean, probably thirty-five feet from the property line, I think. Trying to remember, I think it's about thirty feet, thirty-five feet to save the deck moliad, which is our bill five P, is certainly what saves. Right, so, you know, to save the tree, you get about a hundred feet between our buildings. We don't like always talking buildings because people isn't came up. That's the sort, we always have a measure of distance. So that hundred feet, you're, you're in that sixty-five, sixty-six decibel at the edge of her house, at for the garages, which. Honestly, really, it's put the interest of past, that's gonna be, we need a little more, interest is gonna be in intervals more, so. We just, at, at the distance we would be with the original concept, we can get urban noise, so. Especially since we're sitting next to each other and not pointed right at. Again, I would point to that sound study for Sioux Falls, seventy feet away, right next to each other. We're seeing much of this situation, seventy feet away, she's, that was at fifty-four. Very, very.
And you, you also incorporate technology to, that reduces the amount of sound that typically comes from the car wash centers.
Right. Yes, thanks, Elser. Yeah, MFP knew his investment, the best technology to get here, we don't wanna get above a hundred V S W like some of our competitors do, so we buy. New technology, it's only been on the market for a few years, it's noise reduction. Add the patch of floors, but eighty-five D B A, and then once you get out beyond that, really simply it drops. Plus, we put a car lot inside the tunnel. Some of our car washes go right on the exit, perfect, they're going outside the exit, so. To try to contain that as best we can to reduce the noise, not only for a. So, to try to contain that as best we can to reduce the noise, not only for our customers, but also our employees.
Any questions?
On your, on your site plan, where, where would the vacuum, outside vacuum be?
Which, which, council, are you looking at the, the most recent one?
Yeah.
I'm assuming a little point of that, so the vacuum. So, the vacuum shows will be where these parking slots are. And we use a centralized vacuum system, and that would be contained here. So, those are far quieter than you'll see, and I think gas station got one back in there. It's the generator and the back, and that's the back and the generator. So, the centralized system is far more energy efficient, it's also a lot less quiet here. So, the, the sound overlay that we produce includes the vacuum noise, and it's still within that natural range.
You have a communication with the neighbors, across North South East, West of that. One of the, one of the articles.
So, I, I'm trying to reach out to the words over time to get a, a face, face meeting or phone call. A whole national idea handshake and a face-to-face conversation. He was declined to meet in person or thought that we would long before we exchanged emails. I sent out some plans early on, he indicated he wanted the fifty foot buffer, so we're working towards getting that. I was able to share the, the most current site plan with him today, right before I sent it to members of the council. I just form a previously forty-five, I think, the best we can get. So, it's my plan, you know, to, between now and when the site plan, everything's done, really, meet with them, talk out the concerns, find out, you know, why is fifty feet important, is, if there are other things we can do to help mitigate some of your concerns for us coming in? Because we see this, this whole eighteen acres as a great opportunity for the future economy of Johnston. We want to help spark some of that development along there and, you know, anchor that hardcore.
I'll give you one second. I really email from Mr. [inaudible 00:01:56]. And he seems to think that you not having made a good communication with the neighbors. Oh, email, just say it back. Why bother that, yes, you, he said, anything. I'm not completely sure what that is and why that is, it's something that he.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to it, you know, he hasn't told me why, you know, I, what I'll tell you is, I probably email them at least once a week since the end of the request of the meeting. He's made a response of three times in that time period. July, when I showed to the council that he's asking for a phone number, and I've been upon since I emailed him, he found me responding after that problem. To get back, so I, I, I put a good faith effort forward to try to reach out, talk to these concerns, share updated plans as I've gotten them, but I, I just, we not have a chance to meet in person or even resume work.
You got, you got something else behind? You come back?
Yeah, just, what are you calling over there, I, but I understand this is. That's currently a single-family dwelling unit, zone R one seventy-five, single-family, partially residential. It is on a comprehensive plan as a high-dense residential area that would be subject to official consideration for the council. That is an area that I previously touched on, that they have a full fifty foot buffer requirement there as well.
Other questions? Mayor, I have, I really do want to try to stay away from the site plan itself here, but two questions come up. One, have you had any conversations with the landlord or two of these that councilmember ready just suggested?
I, yeah.
Hi, I'm Elser. The other question is, you mentioned that in Sioux Falls, I think that was, that there was a car wash that was in the historic neighborhood. As far as I goes, what's the address of that?
That address, oh, fifteen hundred South Minnesota Avenue.
PJ, I have a little concern about the possibility that there's been queuing on Northwest Fifty Fifth Avenue. We have problems in our community already with queuing up at our school, when, you know, during drop-off and pickup times. We hear a lot of complaints from our residents about that. Could you just talk to us a little bit about what you think that might happen, what you might be able to minimize that?
You know, I think, I think if it ever happened, it'd be very, very rare. So, as you can see on this illustration here, you know, there are ten cars, plus you can get a few more of various wheel in. And we can get thirty, fifty cars through in an hour on like a, you know, a game basis where you're pulling yourself. Our cars are moving all the time, which is what makes these so much more secure than what you'd see like a gas station. So, those cars are always, so we can get fifty cars through there in a long time, and that's, it's rare we get more than that within an hour of business. They're, they're moving out of their fast, and then they'll come out and, you people either leave, or they will go back.
I'm actually give a lot more thought to that issue because we, we, we get complaints all the time from our residents about the queuing that we have at schools. We don't want another situation like that.
Yeah, I mean, there, councilor Carter asked at one point if we could rotate it a hundred and eighty. One of the primary reasons that we did not want to do that is because then a peak, peak, peak overflow would still end up right, definitely.
Oh, we don't want to need our place.
I agree, I agree.
And I think that's probably why, you know, maybe there's alternative site plans that, but the challenge there is. But that's part of the trade of the challenge. You know, and I, and I, if you can think about in this, the car washes. How often are they, do they have ten cars like a?
I raise it as a concern, I can anticipate, I mean, we hear a lot of, if, if.
Sure, sure. Area. Thank you. You know, again, our hours are eight to eight. Car washes, you know, everyone has their address. A good friend of mine lives in West Deloitte, her, she works at home now, that's kind of, her routine is the, for her morning break at ten o'clock is to get a coffee and a bowl of coffee. A lot of people like to do it on the way to work, some people like to do it every, every morning after getting lunch with their kids. So, people's path, it becomes part of people's patterns, and it really varies, but the times where we really have peak would be, we go to the noon hour, it's people from Southern Luttrell, it's a unit, or on Saturday or Sunday, as we show. I don't anticipate overflow on fifty fifth. Again, it's going to keep on moving so fast, you know, our, our program is usually about three hundred a day, twenty hundred. It's a possibility, I don't think it will be a concern.
I'm not completely convinced. Just asking to give it more thought. Other questions, council?
PJ, I want to head right here, that fifteen hundred South Minnesota Avenue in Sioux Falls, that seems to be a, a little different style than what you're proposing for this. Are there outdoor vacuums at that location as well?
There are there. So, that location was, could you call it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, this area was a car dealership, people may add it. They had a pull-in car wash right here, ancient technology that, and that thing was probably around, like, one hundred, three, yeah, it was old and nasty. So, what we did is we took, this used to be the mechanic shop. So, our entrance is down here on the south side, and that exit, we've got a couple vacuum base here, it was six, and it was quite a few down here itself. Actually go a little south, or the south, this is the, the office headquarters.
Can you spread the view?
Yeah, absolutely. I can, one, one thing, but, so when I talk about that fifty-four DVA from the tunnel exit, that puts that about right here. We're looking at the warehouse from the exit, that would be about right. So, a street view. Want to look towards the tunnel exit, council? Yes, we got six, six vacuum base there. This is also our training center, our operations team, also headquarters are in the steam, some of that area. Where these windows are is the training area. If you're inside training, you can't activate, so it's just that quiet. Down a little bit, farther south, you can see our, our heat breasts. The heat stations, shed. When I mentioned the fifty foot distance, that would be from here to these homes here, that's about fifty. Now, granted, we've got this building here blocking, which definitely is giving to them. But the vacuums out here are, the centralized vacuum system is right here, and these homes are even closer, we still. So, we have six foot fence, we've got trees. That are estimated, our good neighbor, it's a state.
Other questions, council?
Just like this one last question, so you, this land, this property in Johnston, did you purchase that?
Right, we, we purchased that from the locals.
Other questions, council? Is there any ones that would like to address council on the site?
Hello, council, my name's Tiffany Stewart. I live up off of a hundred street here in Johnston. I'm, I'm actually the granddaughter-in-law of Mrs. Ward.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Give us your address.
Yep, seventy-four, wait, sorry, seventy-seventh, forty-four, northwest ninety-fifth court.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Two things I just want to point out to the council is, you know, Mrs. Ward has lived in that house for over sixty years, so I think that just definitely needs to be taken into consideration. And the second piece is, I know they talked about correspondence with the family. I would actually encourage you guys to look into what actually correspondence was had, how many attempts were made, because I'm not sure all of that was actually true. So, I just implore you guys to look into that a little bit further as you guys look to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Council, any further questions for Clayton or the applicants?
Do we have a motion to approve first reading of orders number ten ninety-five?
I mean, I'm certain.
I usually comes after the motion.
I have a motion to approve.
We have a mo, motion to approve orders number ten ninety-five, so a second. Second. A motion and a second discussion?
So, you know, this is obviously a challenging issue, lots of, lots of elements that are challenging about it. And I, you know, I think residents who ask us to take into account the name of the property, because obviously, anytime we do this, that's a big part, right? You have the, you have the joint, you have the property, existing property, there's, there's never a development that doesn't exist in property. That's mine here. And so, I think the question is, is this, you know, there's several questions, but is this developer willing to take steps to try to, give themselves buffer to the, the neighbor to the south especially, and also the neighbor to the east? They already have a fifty foot buffer to the east, and also are prepared to develop a site for that, you know, a fifty foot buffer necessary to the south, or a buffer that would be, you know, quite equivalent to fifty. So, I, I think that they are doing the necessary steps to, to protect that. I think the other thing that's important for us to kind of keep in mind is, it's pretty clear, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about sort of the fundamental question, you know, do we need more car washes in Johnston? Well, that's, as, as much as people might think that, that there's enough car washes in Johnston, clearly the people who are in this business believe that there is a demand, need for more car washes in the Johnston area, and also in the Deloitte market. And so, and obviously, as you, as you look at the map that Clayton brought up earlier, there's several areas on Merle Hay today where somebody could buy land that's known, that would allow for a car wash, and not have to go through the zoning process and go right to a site plan approval. So, to me, this, th, this is not, this is not a vote of, are we going to not have any more car washes if the additional car washes come to Johnston? Because even if this item is denied tonight, I would expect that sometime in the near future, we'll have another proposal in front of us, to build a car wash in Johnston. So, I, I think that, that is so, is something that's not really, are we paid? So, to me, I think we have a proposal here by, by an operator of, of car washes that uses some state-of-the-art technology to reduce water usage. They also use state-of-the-art technology to reduce sound that's generated by a car wash. And they also are prepared to operate this, proceed this facility in a little state-of-the-art way. And I think that's, that's significant and positive. And so, that's why I would support for rezoning. And then I think that as part of, if we do approve the rezoning forward, then we can have discussions about all the issues that come up around the site. Queuing the vehicles, separation between the work property and the cell, and also, not saying trees exist on the property. Those are all the reasons why I believe that this is an appropriate use of this property, and I would support it.
Mayor, could I, um, speak? I will not be supporting this zoning change. I think that, I think that the people that created the PUD and wrote up the ordinance to not allow car washes knew what they were doing, so I'm fine with the way it is written out. I don't know if you recall, but when we were discussing the other tonne car wash that was built, I was also very reluctant to approve that because it takes away from what I believe we want from Merle Hay Road, which is a more friendly, pedestrian-oriented experience. We're going to have a master plan for landscape up and, up and along Merle Hay Road. We are going to have these fabulous developments of the Taliban, we have the town center at the Norcan. We want to encourage people on the street, on those beautiful trails that we are going to be building. And instead, we're going to have a building that only will employ two to three people, and not be conducted, conducive to any kind of pedestrian experience. pedestrian experience. It's a whole lane car experience. So, as again, as I said, uh, I'm going to trust in the people that developed the PUD and I will not be voting for this change.
Further discussion?
I will agree under several problems, um, councilman Martin. And, uh, I haven't yet to hear any support from any of the, any area. Do support for car wash. Like Brandon said, their PUD is what makes their visa. And I think.
I also will not be supporting this, uh, as it's currently stated. Uh, first of all, I don't feel like I've had enough time to take in all of the information that was delivered late this afternoon. Um, I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's fair that we haven't had a chance to actually hear, uh, what apparently is not the truth or is the truth with regard to communications. Um, but more importantly, I want to go back to councilmember Coke's, uh, comments uh, about the fact that there were plenty of other spots where car washes could go. You could have purchased land in any of those areas. You chose not to. You chose to choose an area that zoning doesn't allow that car wash. That was your choice. So consequently, as it stands right now, we have a landowner across the street who doesn't want this area to be rezoned. And we have a motion on the table right now for this would be. For the sake of not giving enough time, even though we have three readings, the fact that that motion would be common victory to a landowner in our city and a long-time landowner in our city. Frankly, none of this is making sense as to why.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to have a few comments here. I was more agreeable with this before. Also, I've said I wouldn't have any car wash. It's good I didn't have a car wash, otherwise I would have seen the area. But what I don't like is the fact that the developers were not able to contact, and you guys didn't know the south side and have it. Like, certainly not the whole, it's April of this year. I always have the notion that in the bill of our government, it's likely to need to take the name of certain situation as well before we actually do anything. If you're not willing to do that, I don't think that's the one way to accommodate. Yeah, that is why I could say no at this point.
Well, you can't always read numbers, but I can count votes. I think we have at least three options before us. We could take this to a vote. If it fails, we can always come back at the next council meeting or, or what we consider. Which will allow a little more time to have a discussion about some of these issues. Councilmember Coke would draw his motion. Make another motion to table it then. Which would allow a little more time for, for discussion. Want to just take it from both of them?
Yeah, this one, I'm not, I have no intention of drawing that motion. I think this is just, I don't know. I mean, if, 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 uh, in the two weeks, I think we should have a vote tonight. If in the two weeks after this, there's communication that occurs, that causes folks to vote. Whatever, and they, they can have a motion because of the next. I think we should still.
Your motion. Okay, well, next call procedure. Sam, vote please.
Martin?
No.
Burkhardt?
No.
Coke?
Yes.
Ray?
No.
Evans?
No.
Motion failed. Yep, we have some work to do in the next two weeks. Thank you very much. As I've on the agenda is to consider approval of resolution number twenty-five, or twenty-three dash two fifty. Approving a memorandum of agreement with the US Department of Commerce, US Census Bureau, conduct a special census.
Uh, good evening, uh, we've been in contact with the US Census Bureau that they are now soliciting, um, requests for special census to be conducted. Um, sort of midway between the, uh, twenty-twenty and twenty-third census. Um, this is something historically the city has done primarily because our road use tax revenue is based on current, um, census number, and so, um, but maybe has enough growth that makes sense to go through the census and do a special census to, to see those increased, uh, revenues. Um, so when we did receive that communication from the Census Bureau, we did ask for an estimate based on, um, where we thought we were growth-wise. Uh, they provided an estimate of, um, five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars. That would be the cost, um, Census Bureau to, to do the census and process the data. Um, in addition, the city would be required, as we were, um, back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, when we did the last special census, to provide , um, small office space and phones and computer equipment, those types of things, um, to assist in that. Um, they are providing us an estimate, and so should their costs come in less than that, we would refund the nail action, provide an updated process of just prior to the , that they have a census, they're concerned about their cost being greater. Um, so we did some, um, math, um, to determine whether that expense was justified. Our twenty-twenty census was, um, twenty-four thousand and sixty-four, um, using, that I've done since I've been here, just trying to, um, use some data to project where our population might be. Looking at our multi-family permits, our time home permits, our single-family permits, apply factors to those based on our average household size. Um, to, to sort of determine what our increase in population is based on our climate activity. Um, and then for, uh, twenty-three and twenty-four, I just, um, kind of carry forward a, a smaller, sort of small growth percentage um, to, um, kind of project out where that might be. Um, there is a lag, obviously, from when we issue a permit, although houses are occupied for, you know, six to nine months typically. Um, it's over, my little bit of numbers, uh, estimating game there. Um, looking at the data, the Iowa DTS available for road use tax, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, they're estimating, uh, a hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents per capita, to be conservative. I, um, that goes up by a dollar each fiscal year after I drop the dollar from that, and assume the dollar less than what their estimates are. Um, and so we looked at a couple of scenarios, doing a census mid-two thousand and twenty-four or a census mid-two thousand and twenty-five. Um, waiting until twenty-twenty-five. And our, and on table there, uh, I believe we deal us about an extra hundred thousand dollars, about one point six million dollars between the completion of the census in twenty-twenty-five and, um, twenty-thirty-one, when we did our new, um, twenty-thirty census number, so. Um, we get about a three, three-folded, uh, return on our investment for getting the census. Um, we have talked about this a couple of different times in the quality of life, and we are recommending forward. Um, in talking through, uh, with the state, um, we need to certify by December thirty-first and calendar year to get the revenue for the following year. Um, and so the recommendation and suggestion that's, um, the date that's included in the memo before you is April first, twenty-twenty-five. We are targeted census date, census would start about six weeks before that, we started sending out notices and getting, um, that information out, and would occur for a period of time thereafter. Much like the sending a census, a lot of us would be done, what kind of, you know, like, push. Go back to earlier census, as well, in our case, with all that on paper, so. With that, I will stop there, um, and, uh, ask if there are any questions there.
Council, any questions, David?
Uh, this is often done every mid-of-the-decade.
Yep.
Okay, and right now the cost is five seventy-nine, six point nine. And a bit of the next five years, we'll get back one point six twenty.
That's our estimate.
One point six twenty minus five seventy-nine, that's just one point one.
Get five of them back.
David, I had two questions, you may have said it while I was scanning other numbers, the first of which is, how would we pay for that?
Um, so their options are, unfortunately, we can't use road use tax, which seems logical because part of it is, you know, we have an interest in early tax, but that's not allowed. We went on that road in twenty fifteen, we tried that, and we're told no, and it will have changed. So, um, our options available are, uh, general fund reserves, local option sales tax, or, uh, water super refuel to plus. Um, I believe SARS recommendation might be, um, library, it would be, um, local option sales tax. Um, as a revenue source for that, we obviously need to do a budget. Said something, right?
David, the next follow-up question in that same vein of, of comps. Uh, the city has undergone one of these, or these before, or they have one in fact. How many costs does this play out? How close are they?
I did pull up for twenty fifteen, um, we actually got a number for twenty sixteen. Um, we spent, um, I just looked at what we paid the Census Bureau, we paid just over, uh, three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand. So then I got similar thoughts, we rented out the space and bought some equipment for them. Um, so it's, it's definitely an increase. If you would expect. Um, maybe a little bit more than I was thinking because so much is done online. The bulk recruitment and the slots. I am sure, like, we would do that probably conservatively.
However, in this next, um, government council, uh, the Census Bureau finds all our employees and takes care of all of that part behind them, whereas previously we had.
Correct, and the last time we actually had to hire temporary employees, that city employees. Um, and part of the challenge we've had is all the name, all the cities that are running, tend to live around the same time. And so then we were trying to stagger, we were all sharing this, who, who are your employees that we fired, and they all have to hire them? Um, the Census Bureau will take on that role now. Um, and so, our, what I gave you the three to three fifty was total cost spent, which was what we paid the Census Bureau and what a cost is in salary for employees. Um, by understanding and, and hearing what other communities are doing, we're all, some cities are going in twenty twenty-four, but it has enough growth, we can justify it earlier. There are at least two or three that are going in twenty twenty-five, or at the same time we are, so in theory, the Census Bureau will have some policies that they're gonna hire staff to be able to employ them over a longer period of time, and they'll just move that along this. And that's, that's something we did when we met with the Census Bureau, we talked about the inefficiency we had last time, and that's something they had addressed. Does cause more upfront.
David, the last question I have has to do with that road use tax allocation overall. I- i- is this a finite or a fixed pool of money that it will be divested, divided by populations? Or in essence, can bring up these other communities that are also doing counts? In other words, are, are we in competition to, to not get as much money if, if other communities actually report more growth than our stuff?
I don't matter, Chris, if it's a better ending to that.
Sorry, um, well, the formula is archaic at best, and, um, the only opportunity we ever have to have a road use tax change is only population. And so, um, yes, it's possible, they might get a little more a year ahead of us, but they taste the pot like they would do, and they will divide it according to however the, I guess, allocation works out, but I don't, I don't think, based on what we've talked about, that it's, um, we're trying to push ours ahead of here. I think we still need to wait.
That, that's, well, that's partially why we were a little more conservative, took a dollar. If you add a dollar to every one of those gears, for, that's, I don't know, a little bit too much. We were trying to be conservative for that reason, but pot isn't big enough to be well. I want to make sure we're still, you know, it's still made.
Maybe the other thing, councilman, for a part is the pool is really statewide. While another city may jump the gun and get ahead a little bit, it's gonna change so many for us here in Johnston. I think it's not gonna be material change overall. It's like, again, it's one of these, we actually, we could, we're worried enough that we can actually catch.
More questions for David? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash two fifty?
Don't move.
Second discussion?
Going for it.
Sam, vote please.
Coke?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven E, consider applicable grants in the amount of one million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and ten cents. A little approval.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Sam, vote please.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to city administrator, staff comments.
Um, two staff reports for myself tonight. Uh, first, Ignite will have a groundbreaking at nine thirty tomorrow morning. Um, at the Ignite sites, certainly welcome, uh, council members, union staff, help to that. Uh, the second item is I will be out of the office, just kind of had some to think through as the next council meeting happens. I will be out of the office starting, uh, Saturday, September thirtieth through October fourth, so we'll make the next council meeting. Uh, if there's anything that comes up before then, please let me know, okay? I'll be attending the ICNA conference in long time.
Do you have a staff comment?
Yes, one item that I have, we do have a public meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, September twenty-seventh. It is on our sidewalk program for segment two, Southern Green Meadows, west neighborhood. Uh, we do, we are doing two separate meetings like we did on segment one, we do have a, a zone one and a zone two, and that information is out on our website. So, just want to give everybody a heads up, we will be starting at five thirty, going for about forty to forty-five minutes, have a little fifteen minute, uh, so we can change, change folks out there in the different zones, and then start again at, uh, six fifteen.
We'll be in the same room then?
Yeah, there is actually a meeting in here, a park board meeting, um, that evening, so we'll be in the training, central training.
Anything else, Sam?
Just a bit, council briefly, I have a history report that we have a group work scan I do, for the city of Johnston. Uh, the streets here, lots of police, he's on our bike shift for the next several months. He'll be doing this pretty soon, coming great next week. We're beginning to do like this personality online, this rare page, through all these kinds of stuff. Start seeing a slow push of information to create that personality part of the process. Thanks to all of you, uh, for your support throughout this process. Um, we've got a long list to fill, we're practicing having, finding a candidate, which is a role.
Any other views?
When will we badge any ceremony?
I know, I hadn't even considered that.
You've gotta have.
Well, what we're talking about is trying to find a work session for, and then, if they have an opportunity to present all of that. I'll do it, but I, I had not considered credentials, so I'll have to back.
Make sure the brand is made, and the little puppies. I bet it's a single.
Anything else, Sam? Break the rain. If you're not fun. I don't know what I do, I could give it up. I've got a reach. Councilmember. Okay.
Yeah. I, I just, I think the other day, I, uh, my, my father gets out. Not like we all do. And we have the music going on up here. And he has never been down here before during an event, had no idea.
Was this on Tuesday night?
Yes. He, he driven by, they never, you know, and so I was able to bring him in and this driver's open. And I brought their arm through. All he kept saying was, oh my God, oh my God, look at this, look at this. And he, so the end of him, this is a, a quiet deal. It was pretty cool. So I just wanted to share that.
Well, I have found a similar story to share. We brought one of our, one of our granddaughters, and she just turned twenty-one. Had got together, we brought her over on Saturday night. And she, she was ready. She couldn't, you know, there was a lot of activity going on near the time, there was music. And, you know, she, she had no idea that we had done all of this in Johnston since the last time she's been there. So, well, similar experience at the other end of the age. Anyway, I, you know, whole guy's coming up this week, that's, uh, my granddad, and he, and and, you know, there was a lot of activities here in Johnston last week. Again, should look very well. Always, always something fun and never be upsetting going on. Mar will be, uh, be doing the groundwork for that.
Anyway, with, is there anything else from, from the council decision? If not, we are here.
I waited a long time to say that.